I think it, I'm assuming, well, I got one that's called Josh Turner.
Yeah. I muted.
You can unmute. And then I have one called Jimmy's iPhone. Jim. Really smart.
Hello.
Hi.
Hey Jimmy.
Hey Josh.
There's no light on.
Alright, it's on.
There's no light on that one. That's one thing I know.
This is our speaking April 13, 2020, Johnson County Council of Order. Roll call.
John Myers.
Here.
Josh Turner.
Here.
Pete Ketchum.
Here.
Jim Eisen.
Here.
Josh McCarty.
President.
Rob Henderson.
Here.
Jonathan Myers.
Here. Pete, would you give an indication, please, on behalf, if we could all take a moment to, uh, your God and your own Father, um, we're grateful for the opportunity to, to have this council meeting tonight, grateful to those who made it possible, uh, to have this meeting tonight. We pray that, uh, we as a council, um, listen to the proposals of, of the, uh, other elected officials, department heads. We pray that, uh, we're able to make good decisions with, with I, um, help. We pray for these things in Jesus' name.
Please hand the pledge of man. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic.
The Republic, which is.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of today's meeting, there's one change to it. We're removing the interlocal agreement between the county and partners then.
That's the only, uh, change?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, reapprove the notice and agenda dated April 13, 2020, as amended to reflect that item.
A motion by Rob Henderson, a second by Jonathan T. Myers. Roll call.
Josh Turner.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Can we do yes or no?
Yes.
Pete Ketchum.
Yes.
Jim Eisen.
Yes.
John Myers.
Yes.
Josh McCarty.
Yes.
Rob Henderson.
Yes.
Jonathan Myers.
Yes. Other comments? Alright, moving on to routine matters, consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to pull out to discuss further? I have a question on the, uh, the P A S I A, um, professional services, is that new money or is that their own money that they're planning to spend?
It comes from court fees, guardianship fees.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. A motion by Mr. Curry, a second by Mr. Henderson.
Josh Turner.
Yes.
Pete Ketchum.
Yes.
Jim Eisen.
Yes.
John Myers.
Yes.
Josh McCarty.
Yes.
Rob Henderson.
Yes.
Jonathan Myers.
Alright, yep, next is 911. Pete Brant, 911 Director. So we're, we're back to talk about the, uh, Smart 911 and Rave proposal. What I said to you, sent to council members was, um, the, there was a question about five-year contracts, and so you should have a five-year and a three-year contracts, uh, option. So the, the difference would be in the, the five-year contracts would be, increase the annual, uh, budget by $3,468, the three-year contracts, um, there, there is a price difference in that, is what we anticipated. Would actually increase the, uh, the budget by $7,310.11.
Do I need to say my name before I comment?
Thanks.
Jim Eisen, uh, I did have an opportunity to, uh, sit in on a conference call, uh, with the representatives from Smart 911 and Rave and Director Brant. I, after, uh, seeing the presentation and looking into it a little bit, um, I do think it is going to be a worthwhile, um, product to purchase. The concern that I have is the low percentage, uh, of people in the surrounding counties that are participating. I think that that's just an obstacle we'll have to get over, but, um, one of the aspects that I thought was really beneficial was, uh, the ability for businesses, schools, et cetera, to, um, download maps of their, uh, facilities, uh, along with any type of pertinent information that would help first responders, uh, when seconds matter, uh, the officers can pull that up right from their vehicle, so could the fire department, uh, and have instant, uh, maps, uh, of, uh, some of the buildings. Uh, actually, anyone that would want to participate, uh, could upload those into the system. As far as the public side, it, it has some definite benefits. One question that I did have for Heath, um, I know that the DOJ has, um, uh, offered, uh, some grants, Johnson County, I believe, was approved for somewhere in the area of $55,000. And this type of, uh, software would, after reading the, uh, requirements for the grant, looks like it would, um, be eligible. Um, I know that the grant is also, uh, available to the jail, um, for, uh, the purpose of making it COVID-19 safe. Um, so I'm sure the sheriff will, uh, probably be asking for, uh, some of those grant funds, but just out of curiosity, has that been thought about for this system or, um, is all of that, uh, being allocated or, or planning to be allocated to the, to the jail?
My understanding for that is that, uh, I know the sheriff, just, in your man, my understanding is the sheriff is applying for that, it's $58,000 grant, and, uh, the sheriff could go in front of the commissioner today, to best permission to, um, apply for that grant, that my understanding is his plans are to use that for, for, uh, for the sheriff's office.
Okay, and, and I thought that might be the case, but I wanted to address it before, um, I commented any further. So with that, um, with the minimal, uh, annual cost, this is going to, uh, cost the county, uh, with the reduction from the services AT&amp;T was providing, um, I would be in favor of it.
Uh, we talked about the AT&amp;T, some of those funds dropping off. Did you come up with a number for that and what would help offset this? Yeah, so if, uh, if I said it, um, so the amount that it would, would offset that, uh, would be $35,412 a year. And on a five-year contract, the cost would be a total of $38,880. So that's where the increase of $300, $3,468 comes in. And another thing that, um, that with this pandemic we have going on, you know, with, one thing that Hamilton County, who has the system, is using it for, uh, we can track, so as the health department, we're able to track lab confirmed positive tests. Uh, what we can't track are those presumed positives. Or, uh, so those people who are, had been ordered to quarantine, Hamilton County is actually using this to track that. It's allowing, um, allowing people to, it's allowing, uh, the public to go in and, uh, understanding the severity of the situation as having them put in to their account, that they've been ordered to quarantine. That way, if they call 911, or, uh, the, their dispatcher is automatically notified that there's someone in that house. There was something that, that's something I thought was, was a good feature in this.
Keith, I, I have a question for you. Can you, can you explain to me the net, the net difference again, um, on how the AT&amp;T situation works and what the net difference is per, annually, per year?
Yeah, so the, the AT&amp;T, what it is, is we have, uh, legacy charges on our AT&amp;T account, and that is $2,951 a month, uh, so over, was just still quarterly, so with, with that, it comes down to $35,412 that the state is going to be paying for. And so with the, with the cost of this, um, from second year on, being thirty, uh, I'm sorry, $38,880 on a five-year contract, the difference between what the state is going to be paying and what the cost of this, um, this piece of, uh, programming, what cost would be the $3,468.
Okay, thank you.
Which one, uh, were the commissioners recommending?
I don't think, I don't think they had an option between three and five years when we talked about their.
Right, yeah, at that point, it was, it was the five-year contract that, that they originally approved pending legal. And, but they did approve the five. Yes. And this is all part of the, the next generation 911 technology that, you know, that, uh, that they're pushing for, uh, with the enhanced power location and things like that, so, you know, this is kind of, uh, kind of a fly-by-night thing, this is something that's, that's here to stay.
I'll make a second. Give me a motion at first, I don't think we have a second.
Do you make a motion?
Yeah.
Do you make a motion, Jeff?
No, but I will. I'll make a motion to. But are we approving, I'll make a motion to approve the five-year, um, lease agreement.
Do you make a motion to approve the five-year lease?
I'll, I'll second that motion.
A motion by Mr. Eisen, second by Mr. Henderson, any other discussion? Roll call.
Josh Turner.
Yes.
Pete Ketchum.
Yes.
Jim Eisen.
Yes.
John Myers.
Yes.
Josh McCarty.
Yes.
Rob Henderson.
Yes.
Jonathan Myers.
Yes. Thank you, thank you. Emergency management.
That PC's been the EMA director. I am here to ask for additional preparation of $10,000 to go into my disaster spending account, which has $1 in it to keep it active. Um, I've been purchasing, I've activated my MOUs with stores and been purchasing wipes and hand sanitizers and gloves for the county offices. They've been more than a dollar.
Stephanie, is there, is there anything that, um, we as a county, um, are short on, on these supply? Uh, obviously, I'm sure we're short, but is there any, I mean, are you able to keep up with what we have?
Yeah, because we, they call us as soon as they know it's on the truck.
Okay.
For the workforce to go pick it up, pay for it.
Do you think this $10,000 will give you through this?
Probably not.
Or are you thinking for long-term forward?
I would say at least, after, if you approve the $10,000, probably another $15,000, at least. Cause I'm also helping the jail buy PPE equipment.
Well, anybody else has anything else?
Uh, Josh McCarty, I'll make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Same. A motion by Mr. Curry, a second by Mr. Ketchum, any other discussion? During that roll call.
Josh Turner.
Yes.
Pete Ketchum.
Yes.
Jim Eisen.
Yes.
John Myers.
Yes.
Josh McCarty.
Yes.
Rob Henderson.
Yes.
Jonathan Myers.
Yes.
And I'll also tell you that we will get reimbursed all these expenses, as long as we can have, we keep an old receipt, so we have to turn them in on the disaster. Thank you.
Stephanie?
Yes. Yes.
Eisen. Um, how are we on, uh, the, uh, N95 mask? Do we have plenty of those?
No, Betsy and I were just talking about that, I just got a quote, um, that where you are going to look into tomorrow, um, from a company that, uh, Shane Cunningham, Indiana State Police, gave me the contact information that I just signed from this company, and the gentleman just called me when I was walking in tonight, and so he was gonna send me the quote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Health Department.
Betsy Swearingen, Director, Health Department. Um, I'm here, uh, tonight to ask for an additional line item and then an appropriation into that line item, um, to piggyback with what Stephanie said, um, to buy, to activate our MOUs and to help buy supplies that we need. Uh, Stephanie or EMA is, uh, primarily responsible for the jails and law enforcement. I'm responsible for the health departments, the long-term care facilities, other agencies. All monies will, will be reimbursed as we put the receipts back into the system. Stephanie will split the N95 bill tomorrow, and I know we'll split some of the jail supplies too.
A motion to approve the question as presented. A motion by Mr. Henderson, a second by Jonathan T., any other discussion?
Josh Turner.
Yes.
Pete Ketchum.
Yes.
Jim Eisen.
Yes.
John Myers.
Yes.
Josh McCarty.
Yes.
Rob Henderson.
Yes.
Jonathan Myers.
Yes. Yes, other ones?
I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda with me, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Thanks, P P one?
Right, I, well, I have a couple of, uh, different things with regard, um, to that. I wanted to transfer. Money, um, out of the full-time position. Ketchum to where I am here, okay, yeah, I wanna move, um, into a, I wanna move from the overtime line item and the perf line item, uh, to FICA in a part-time line item. That position will now be, it won't be paid for out of overtime, it'll be paid for out of a part-time line item. And I'd like that to, um, that hourly rate to be $25 retro to 227 of this year.
That's the normal.
That's the, has always been the rate in that line item, and that originally, when the preparedness grant started, that was the, was the, the hourly rate. And then we had some accounting or auditor issues, and then those rates went to what the hourly rate, the person that was a full-time hourly rate for when they did this part-time position, then that hourly rate changed. And so then we had to create an overtime line item because the person would work their full-time hourly rate in their regular office job, and then after hours would go into overtime because it would be over 37.5 hours a week. So that's why it was all in overtime, and now we just wanna put it into a part-time line item because they're only working a part-time position now, they're not working a full-time, regular health department job. I know it's confusing.
It's a nurse or what is?
It's a, our grants manager.
Grants manager.
Yeah. And she was our office manager, but retired and now is maintaining the grants manager position.
Are the conditional hours as of, uh, this event going on or would it have occurred anyway?
It would, it would have occurred, it's just the normal management of the grants. Um, yes, we're working way over what we, um, get paid for because there's only a certain amount of money in the grant.
Was that her rate when they were full-time?
Her rate when she was full-time would have been roughly the $18 an hour, overtime on that. So she was making more before, and this is a, a reduction in, in hourly rate for her.
But she was the office manager, and now she, where should we do it now?
Now she's, okay, in it, before, she was the office manager during, during regular business hours, and then on evenings and weekends, she was the grants manager, it's a part-time position. Now she is no longer the office manager, she's just doing the part-time grants management.
Betsy? Jim Eisen, uh, on the overtime that you're experiencing from this pandemic, um, those hours, are they, uh, are they gonna be reimbursed, um, by, uh, the federal government, you know?
Yes, and so we're keep, I, I'm also, I've also asked Pam, um, to take the remainder of the salary that's in the office manager's line item and put that into overtime for the COVID experience, and then all of those overtime, um, uh, payments will be reimbursed to the county.
Okay, thank you.
Betsy, thank, thank you for all you guys are doing. I'm sure, um, everyone is putting in a crazy amount of hours, and I know this is, uh, unprecedented times for everybody, but I did wanna just thank you publicly for all that you guys do there at the Health Department.
Oh, thank you, my staff's been working very, very hard, I'm very proud of them.
I'm sure they have.
So what did you get, $25 an hour?
Because when we first took the preparedness grant, um, actually, that was a rate set by John Bonn said, uh, the first preparedness coordinator, uh, got $35 an hour, and he thought that that was too much, so he dropped that down to 25, and so we just, that's always been the rate since the inception of the grant.
I'll move to approve as presented. Second. A motion by Mr. Ketchum, second by Jonathan T., any other discussion? Roll call.
Josh Turner.
Hey, yes.
Pete Ketchum.
Yes.
Jim Eisen.
Yes.
John Myers.
Yes.
Josh McCarty.
Yes.
Rob Henderson. Jonathan Myers.
Thank you. This is, that's that same, okay, so the office manager, it's the, it's the base in the CRI grants, they're two different, it's 8,281.99. So we have a little bit of overtime money in that line item, we wanna move that to the part-time line items, taking it out of overtime to this position. The office manager gets paid out of both grants, just depends, we take it out of one to begin with, when we're out of that, then we finish paying it out of the other.
So will this part-time be reimbursable?
This, this is, no, this is our preparedness grant, these, this one's not reimbursable.
I'll move to approve. A motion by Mr. Ketchum, second by Jonathan T., any other discussion?
Josh Turner.
Yes.
Pete Ketchum.
Yes.
Jim Eisen.
Yes.
John Myers.
Yes.
Josh McCarty.
Yes.
Rob Henderson.
Yes.
Jonathan Myers.
Yes. Thank you. After that, so progress.
Uh, Pamela Burt, Hamilton County Auditor, and I should know, that's turnover in staff again. And I have some, would like to reallocate some of the budgeted money, a little bit to, uh, what we've changed some duties and things, it would be more appropriate. So I sent some in detailed explanation, but it's a total of $1,482. And like that, if it were active, to 31220. My girl went to be Betsy's office manager. That was funny.
Any discussion? I'll entertain your motion. Motion to approve. I'm going to be quick. Second. A motion by Jonathan T. Myers, a second by Rob Henderson. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Pete Ketchum.
Yes.
Jim Eisen.
Yes.
John Myers.
Yes.
Josh McCarty.
Yes.
Rob Henderson.
Yes.
Jonathan Myers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
The meeting, Andy Varner, Chief Deputy Sheriff's Office. We've got a appropriation we might like to make out of the sheriff's deferral fee for some computer equipment. Uh, what this is, it's a replacement for our server. We have a standalone domain, it's a child domain under the counties. And this is a replacement for that system as well as the backup system. So when we, uh, recently got a new pure administrator and he has an extensive, uh, commercial networking background and identified some weaknesses that we have. And basically told us that we lost some of our critical pieces of, uh, components of our server. It would be out of luck and would not have been likely to get a backup. Because the backup system resides on that same server. So he put together a proposal here, uh, you see the grant total was twenty-three thousand five hundred for all the components and software license.
Don't everybody speak at once, right, Andy?
That's right. Talk about computer server, make this quiet.
I'm just blinded by the, by the glare coming off that head.
Actually, with, uh, your camera there, it's about twice as worse for you.
It's coming out of the deferral fund?
That's correct. So there's, uh, no additional appropriations needed out of general fund. We've got the money sitting there and that, uh, for things like this when incidental expenses come.
I'll make.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Mr. Eisen, a second by Mr. McCarty, any other discussion? Roll call.
Josh Turner.
Yes.
Pete Ketchum.
Yes.
Jim Eisen.
Yes.
John Myers.
Yes.
Josh McCarty.
Yes.
Rob Henderson.
Yes.
Jonathan Myers.
Thank you. If I could, real quickly, too, uh, the sheriff wanted to make sure that, uh, let everyone know that we have been also spending quite a bit of money out of commissary on P P E equipment. There was fifteen thousand dollars just last week. Uh, so appreciate everything the Health Department and Members of the Management has done. But obviously, with as many employees as we have, it's not adequate to keep up with everything. So we're spending quite a bit out of commissary to keep up with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Officer. Can that be turned into emergency management or Health Department for reimbursement?
Yes, so, uh, I don't believe there's any problem just because it comes out of the commissary funding. I understand is that it will still be eligible for the grants. So we've, uh, got the commissioner's approval this morning, or, I'm sorry, this afternoon, to apply for a V J A grant as well on top of a few of the funds. So, and that's specifically for, uh, reimbursement for COVID expenses. So we're hopeful that we'll get some of that as well versus, all right.
Thank you.
Probation.
Hi, I'm Angela Morris, Chief Probation Officer. Um, I am here to request. I'm here to request, um, an additional appropriation for ten thousand dollars into overtime. And I will credit this to it being a rookie mistake, creating my first budget last year. And I grossly underbudgeted for this line item. Just a history of the last two years, in two thousand eighteen, um, fourteen thousand five hundred was spent in overtime. Two thousand nineteen, it was twenty-eight thousand. And for some reason, I budgeted for six thousand this year. So, something out of the ordinary, it's not anything new. Just by mistake.
Angela, do you pay overtime out of the one, um, one zero zero one and also the supplemental probation? The two one oh one?
Yes, there, sorry, there is a line item in that, in the, um, twenty-one oh one.
Okay. And did we move, did we move some monies over to that? I can't recall, like six thousand dollars or something?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and there's, there's, there's still that balance in there?
Correct.
Okay. And you just, you just are using as much or more overtime right now? As you have previously?
I went back and looked at this year, um, with thirty-five employees. We had our alcohol drug program and reentry program both had to be recertified this year with Supreme Court. Um, that pulled some out. And then, um, circuit court runs until six or seven o'clock at night on criminal days often. Um, and then we have, um, pre-sentence investigations that we try to push through pretty quick. Um, just to help the jail members and, and so that the court dockets move faster. So when I looked at this year, didn't see any, it wasn't anything abnormal to the last two years. And I only went back two years.
So I don't have all the information in front of me and I didn't have a chance to, to look at it. But if you, if you've got some balance in your supplemental, um, why, why the additional appropriation right now? Is this for the, uh, another account?
The auditor's office requested that the overtime be paid at the same fund that the salary is. Otherwise, it creates additional pay records and paychecks and messes with the taxes.
Yes.
We had to clean all that up at budget time.
Okay.
Angela, for my information, all of the, uh, probation officers are eligible for overtime?
Yes, sir.
You guys don't flex in the paper? Flexing out there?
Um, if possible, yes.
Angela, you're definitely gonna need this money, right?
Um, I would anticipate, I mean, yes.
I'll move to approve. Second. Have a motion by Mr. Ketchum, a second by Mr. Henderson. Any other discussion?
Josh Turner.
Yes.
Pete Ketchum. Jim Eisen.
Yes.
John Myers.
Yes.
Josh McCarty.
Yes.
Rob Henderson.
Yes.
Jonathan Myers.
Yes. Thank you.
All righty. Johnson County, really about my admission, hangover report.
Peter Johnson, County three. Um, what you have. What you have before you is a required report to the D L G F that has to go to the council and commissioners. Permission is as after. And here we are. You can see they have minimal expenses over the last year. Not a lot on the report.
A motion. Have a motion by Mr. Henderson, a second by Jonathan T. Myers. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Josh Turner.
Yes.
Pete Ketchum.
Yes.
Jim Eisen.
Yes.
John Myers.
Yes.
Josh McCarty.
Yes.
Rob Henderson.
Yes.
Jonathan Myers.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, I got one other thing from a micro order that was passed on to me. Amy, uh, special, uh, just for the position. For money, last year, we received, uh, eight hundred thousand, or eight hundred ninety-nine thousand and fifty-six dollars. This year, we're projected to receive, probably the first of May, nine hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Is there anything else? I don't know, I don't have that. Anything on the older duty? I have nothing. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
I don't wanna adjourn, I was just getting started. Having fun. Second.
It's gotta be time for a snack, Josh.
I know, it is, right? Time for dinner. I smell it cooking right now.
Call paper?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Guys, you say. Amy, are you signing for us or how are we doing that?
No, I'm not signing for you. No, we'll let you know what we decide.
Okay.
We'll give you power of attorney, Jimmy.
Jimmy, you just saw that glare.
I'll do that. I'll sign everyone's.
Thanks.